I'd like to call to order the March 13th, 2019 Select Board Meeting to Order. Announcements, I'll take care of that since Libby's on her way. The Select Board Meeting is being video and audio recorded. If she had anything else. Rob, do you have an announcement?
Yes, Rob McNeil, DPW, just wanted to announce that the Select Board approved pilot for Old South and Fairgrounds should, is, the goal is to get it operational for the two weeks leading up to town meeting, so operational by Monday. We've marked out, staff has been working back at the garage to prepare materials to get this up and running. It's, it's going to take a bit of an effort because it's being done under live traffic, so it's piece by piece, but it'll be interesting and we're all looking forward to this trial so that we can see if this area will benefit by introducing a roundabout.
It's just two weeks?
So, the, it's sort of a three-step process.
Okay.
It could end with step one. Step one is this, sort of the cheap alternative, which is going out there with some, literally plywood and fasteners and paint and making use of the space that's there. If this ends up being a favorable response at town meeting, the town manager and I would move forward with step two, which is leaving this in place and having it continue to operation, operate, replacing the plywood with a more permanent but a temporary situation in the same exact locations while, and it'll leave it operational while the final design and ultimately the third step, which would be the construction of the permanent roundabout at this location.
Okay.
The good news is the step-two piece, if we get there, those materials are recoverable and reusable, so if we ever wanted to have this kind of a pilot or a test at another location, we could try it there.
Okay, alright, thank you. Libby, any other announcements? Are there the video, audio recording?
Did you, did Rob make mention of the info session for tomorrow?
Oh, no. Sorry, thank you. This Thursday's info session is focused on Matikit culverts, the Matikit ditch long pond water quality, as well as Children's Beach Pump Station specifically and the watershed that feeds the Children's Beach Pump Station.
And that's upstairs at six?
That is here at six, I'm not sure which room it's in.
Here or upstairs?
And the last one that's scheduled for the season is next Thursday, and that's going to focus, it's, it's on the schedule as downtown sidewalk improvements. We will field questions of all of the downtown, but the focus will be on Upper Main Street. The goal is to come back before you to move forward with the, the first model piece, 86, 88 Main Street, and have that completed before summer to get some feedback from the residents up there when they return.
How many info sessions, how many Thursday night info sessions did you do this year?
All of them.
Twelve, fifteen?
I'm not sure how many.
That's a lot. I applaud you for giving your Thursday nights up for an info session. It's nice.
It's great stuff. It's when people are available to meet, so it's, it's good to get input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment here that's not on the agenda? Alright, there's no new business that I know of, approval of minutes, payroll warrants, and treasury warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Approval of pending contracts. Any questions? Libby?
Motion to approve?
For second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Citizen Department request, Camp, Richard Campers Association, request for waiver of building permit and HDC application fees for project. Any questions or motion?
I make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries five oh. Nantucket, the Housing, Nantucket, sorry, Housing Nantucket, sorry, the NHL always throws me off, properties.
I'm just going to recuse from the vote on this because I'm a butter.
Request for approval of regulatory agreements, this for Seven Surfside. This is more of a formality, I think. Libby?
Tucker could speak to any specifics, but I think this is a concept that the board approved quite some time ago.
Okay.
Yeah, this, Tucker Holland Housing Specialist, it's great news, DHCD has approved these four units to go on the shy list, and this is the last step.
That's great, great to hear.
Making a motion to approve?
There is actually, sorry.
There's a motion in your packet, prepared by Town Council, so if you could read that, that'd be great.
I have it right there.
I make a motion to approve based on the outline in the packet, and as, do we need to read it?
I think it, you can just note that it's the motion in the packet.
Thanks.
I'll second that.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries four oh.
And a thank you to Housing Nantucket for doing this?
Yes.
Okay, number three is real estate acquisition for the Nantucket Island Land Bank. This is, there's three things here, A, B, and C. We can go through them, or we can, if anybody has any questions, or we can approve them all in one bit.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All three.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this is-
Motion carries.
The culmination of-
The grand swap.
Well, actually, it's, it's the school getting the, the space that they need for the playgrounds and the playing fields over by NIS, and it's also the, the fixing of that corner, which was a collaboration with NISDA and the DPW.
Environmental stewardship for the creeks, it's a major accomplishment.
Yeah, there's-
Hi, Diane O'Neil, Nantucket Public Schools. We just really want to say thank you. This is a huge thing for our schools. It'll give us the ability to build a playground for the new intermediate school, as well as a large baseball field and some playground area over there on Bacchus. We just wanted to thank the Select Board, the Nantucket Islands Land Bank, NISDA, all the staff at the town, all of us at the schools who have worked. I think it's been four and a half years to get to here, so thank you so much.
And I would just thank you for your patience. I know this has been something that you wanted to accomplish earlier, but government sometimes takes longer than we want.
Yep.
I want to add to all the thanks, particularly the Director of Planning and Labor spent a lot of time on this, the Land Bank staff as well, our staff, Town Council, and aside from the playing fields, which is critical to school issues, this corner that Dawn mentioned is mentioned in a bulk fuel storage relocation, one of the several reports that have been done over the last 30 years about moving the tank farm out of town, and one of the recommendations was to modify that corner to make it easier for the trucks that are going to be coming in with fuel now, taking it out of town, easier, but other trucks as well. So, that was a 2014 report, so correct. Town government does not move quickly.
It's also the completion of really those, the three intersections.
Yes, thank you, right, that's right.
That have been a collaboration between multiple organizations, and, and planning had a lot to do with orchestrating all of it.
Great, so that motion carried, five oh. Over to Town Manager's report.
Okay, the first item is an update on the strategic plan, and Janet Schulte, who is our kind of strategic plan coordinator, is going to give a bit of an update, followed by, one of the goals has a bit of a more detailed report that Transportation Planner Mike Burns is going to get into.
Thank you, Janet Schulte, Director of Culture and Tourism, and your Strategic Planning Coordinator. Since the board adopted the strategic plan last November, the work groups have been very intentional in meeting on a monthly basis. I can tell you that those meetings have been very engaging with good and detailed discussion and a lot of debate, and they're also meeting with each other outside of the monthly meetings in order to get work done to achieve the function, to achieve the action steps that are required to implement these eight goals. In the area of transportation, you will be reviewing a parking demand management program memorandum next week, and the, later today, Mr. Burns will be presenting to you the issues addressing goal number two in that area, which is the walking corridor between this property and downtown to the ferry landing. The area and environmental leadership includes changes made to the landfill sorting with a significant amount of outreach to the public. I keep seeing it popping up all the time on Facebook and, and lots of inquiries about how to do it, and that these sorting changes were made based on a study by the WPI students last fall. They, a group of students went through 200 bags of trash to figure out what was in it. Can you imagine what fun that was? And they got academic credit for doing that. They're going to, so that was a waste characterization study. They're going to redo that study in the, in the summer at the height of the season to see what else we can learn from those data. The housing goal to achieve safe harbor status has been pursued through the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and, and primarily in the review of the Housing Production Plan. That warrant, Article 37, will also have a potential impact to help address the goal to achieve the shy list number. There's been significant attention in the paper and presentations have been made or are planned at the Dreamland, the Unitarian Church, and the Congregational Church about the housing situation on Nantucket. It's called ripple effect. And there are projects underway to address goal two, to house town employees and a dormitory for seasonal employees, and a concept plan for six individual homes. The Nantucket Data Platform has been enlisted to conduct a study to address housing goal number three, to determine in greater need, detail the need for housing across all income levels in the community. We had meetings yesterday of two of the groups, Housing and Environmental Leadership, and a lengthy discussion about the definition of sustainability, and we will be continuing to pursue that in order to address goal number one and goal number two in that area. Can I address any questions?
No, thank you for the update.
On Housing, I have a couple of things, yeah. On Housing, there's going, do you already have a completed list of the existing zoning changes that encourage housing? Will, you guys going to do a list of potential changes that would encourage even more? Is that something that the group has talked about?
It hasn't been on the conversation yet.
Okay. That's one, and then the other was, there's, it says Housing, Housing Town Employees, and it sort of talks about, there's state law and other implications that have to be overcome. Will there be any recommendation on how to overcome them?
My understanding is that there are significant legal barriers to allowing that to happen, and that we probably won't be seeing any particular program to, to be able to address that.
I'm going to keep pushing, because I think we have to find a way to, to do that, anyway.
We did start to talk yesterday, and not about housing the year-round employees, but about, that we probably do need to move forward about, with discussing the dormitory for the seasonal housing.
But I think the, for the, from the big picture, though, I mean, look at the hospitals have to put up housing. You know, I house 35 of my 50 people, or I wouldn't be in business. The hospital houses them, NIR houses them. I just think, we, you know, even though there's things that say you can't, I, I would like to think, how do we find a way to say we can? And that, so anyway, that's, you know, I, and I know the group is, is doing a lot, and I'm not saying it's doing a bad job, but I'm saying I think we have to sort of say, how do we do it? You know, what do we have to overcome, and how do we, who do we have to talk to, what, you know, it's an important issue.
And I would say that these work group meetings really are about checking in and keeping each other accountable, and that a lot of the work takes place in staff and their regular day jobs that are coming back to it with that. So, I just push.
No, you keep us on task, and when we talk about transportation, I have a comment on that, but we'll get there.
Great. Mr. Burns?
Hey, go back. We'll start with this one, and then we'll go to the next one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is to update the board on the status of a goal-two corridor. You're familiar with, in your capacity as Chair of the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee and Mr. Select Mefe's, familiar in his role on, on BPAC as well, that this has been reviewed in an effort to complete at least one sidewalk connection between downtown and the Mid-Island area. The map being projected shows that downtown's being defined as the two ferry terminals, and Mid-Island's being defined as where we are right now in the public safety facility at Six Fairgrounds Road. An effort was made to align the corridor with existing capital projects that have been recommended as far as previous planning efforts. That's been achieved along, by including some sidewalk improvements along Main Street and the Pleasant Street area. There are some other capital projects that are recommended along Sparks Avenue, Pleasant Street, Washington Street, Orange Street, Old South Road, and Newtown Road, and if we go to the next slide, I can show you how the status of town meeting articles impact what I just mentioned as a number of different routes. There have been a number of downtown sidewalk improvements completed to date. Article 10 at this upcoming Annual Town Meeting includes additional funding for sidewalk improvements in the downtown area to help continue that effort, and again, help to realize this goal number two for the Select Board. Previously, in last year's town meeting, funding was appropriated for the Sparks Avenue and Pleasant Street sidewalk improvements. You'll also see that a section of the in-town bike path has been completed, but there is an Article 16 at this Annual Town Meeting for improvements along Orange Street. Again, this is to progress. I think a lot of you are familiar with the bike lanes that exist along a portion of Orange Street, and that they end between Spruce Street and East Creek Road. Article 16 would help fill that gap in the bike lane system, so that would be another section where bike pedestrian accommodation is made. And then lastly, on the far right side of the, the map, you'll see that Article 11 for this upcoming town meeting includes bike pedestrian transit improvements along Newtown Road and Old South Road. Both of those corridors are funded with Article 11. So, these, this does seem like a very achievable goal, implementing at least one sidewalk section, but you can see there are a lot of, of major projects that do fall within these corridors as well, and once all of them are in place, then we should have a more improved accommodation for bike and pedestrian access between downtown and, and the Mid-Island area. Happy to answer any questions that you have about these recommendations.
First off, I want to say thank you for creating this map. It's really helpful to see what we've already passed, what's upcoming, and then pass that in the future. You know, we aren't just having Sparks and Pleasant Street already pass town meetings and appropriated, and that's, we have to get the work done on those, and then, I think it's just a great visual for the, for the goal. Thank you for creating this map.
Thank you.
Anything else on this one?
No.
I think that there's another, the other strategic goal in transportation with the on-demand parking, we, because it's, there's more work to be done, we're going to move it to, is it next week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that what you're waiting to, to comment on, on that part?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I think Libby had some good comments, some good questions about it. There's a lot more work, and, you know, Mike, and I made this comment to Jason previously, as I think we need to do more than 15, 25 minutes to kind of sort out some of these things. You know, I think, I'd like our recommendation to come sort of half-baked, not underbaked. You know, I'd like to do at least, get halfway there, so we'll see.
Okay.
Okay, the monthly Town Management Activities Report is shown here. I won't go over every item, but I did want to make special note of the first item, 2019 Annual Town Meeting and Election Warrant Prep. We're doing a lot of public outreach right now. There are many places where people can find information about town meeting. The warrant has been sent to the printer. It'll be mailed out to all voters in the next two weeks?
No later than March 22nd.
No later than March 22nd, so a little over a week, people ought to be getting it in the mail. It's also online on the town website. If people want to look at it, they can do that. We're, NCTV is going to, has worked with us on some videos on the larger capital projects. Those are almost ready. We have some big informational boards that we're working on. Those are going to be put around in different locations prior to town meeting, and they will be available at town meeting. The newsletters, meetings with the Nantucket Town Association Rotary, Nantucket Civic League has its Meet the Articles Annual Forum on Saturday, March 23rd, 1 to 3. Some of us, department heads have been doing radio interviews about different items specific to town meeting. The INM has a series, article series called The Road to Town Meeting. We've got some new public informational sessions that we're doing this year. One is Thursday, March 21st, 4:30 to 5:30. I think it's here in this room, and that is with zoning staff. If anybody has any questions about zoning articles on the warrant, they are free, it's, it's a kind of a drop-in, not taped. People want to come and ask informal questions. Same the following Thursday for the rest of the articles, the 28th. There are some, some, I call them public informational sessions, but they're sort of places for people to come and talk at the handlebar in the next couple of Thursdays.
Next three Thursdays. They're for anybody, citizen or an article, authors, just, if you have any questions, I can answer them. I'll send them on to connect you with the-
And we're finishing up the Voters Guide. Hopefully, that'll be finished up by early to mid next week. Get on the website and be available at town meeting. That's about a week or so earlier than we've had it in the past. We've got a number of plans and studies that are underway. The Plus Operational Review, that's actually not going to be on the Select Board Agenda for next week. That's going to be at a TBD time to, to give people additional time to review the draft report. It is not final at this point. Hazard Mitigation Plan, as the board knows, that was endorsed by you on March 6th, and now we are in the process of developing our Implementation Plan Strategy. Coastal Resiliency Plan, I just wanted to mention, well, I won't go through all of them. They're all shown here, but there are a number of actions associated with the plan. They're all listed here, a lot of things going on with that. Of course, we have a lot at work going on with the marijuana dispensaries. You're going to be getting an update sometime in the next two to three weeks about spring roadway projects. We're going to be showing you a map. There are a lot of roadway projects going on this spring, not to, not Richmond, Old South Road is one of them. There are a lot of improvements that are going to be happening on Milestone Road and a lot of others. So, we're going to get a map, show it to you, so we can get a little more public with it. The old fire station reuse, that's underway. Number of personnel positions, and Harbor Place is still plugging along. We are about to receive, hopefully, some draft development agreement, potential terms, and then we will bring those to the board after our subgroup reviews them.
Thank you, Libby. Onto Select Board Reports and Comments. First up is the Human Services Contract Review Committee, report and recommendations for 2020. Anybody here to give that?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi there.
Dorothy Hertz, Chair of the Contract Review Committee.
Just come up to the mic a little bit and just pull it down, just so they can get it on the TV.
Okay. Dorothy Hertz, Chair of the Contract Review Committee. I think you have in front of you the recommendations we have put together this year, and I'll explain each one of them as we go along, and as to why. We did not approve this report as a final recommendation because we did not get a quorum. We did, the funds in the report have been approved with a quorum, okay? So, just the report as you see it. A Safe Place, we have awarded $10,000 to Safe Place. A Safe Place is under a new leadership this year of Jennifer Frazee. She took the role on for fiscal year 2019. She previously was a counselor and educator there. She has a commitment to reestablish new goals, sorry, let's start all over, to establish new rapport with the nonprofits. Part of their grant process this year is they have to do more outreach, so they're working on their outreach. They've also have Carrie Bridges, who has been doing more on the communications, and they actually this year did a program with the Fire Department, which they were able to use it as accredited class in using the program they use with the Police Department, and I'm trying to remember the name, I'm sorry. Oh, Beacon, it's called the Beacon Project, I'm sorry. And it's given to everybody if there's a domestic abuse call by the Police Department, and they trained the Fire Department on, on that this year, too, which is allowing both the Safe Place and the Fire Department to benefit from their educational programs. They're working hand-in-hand with Health Imperatives on a program called SAFE, which works with high school students. They initially had 52 students sign up on a daily, on a weekly basis. They probably have about 15 children involved in the program. And they have, Carrie Bridges is a new hire, who is the Communication Director. Did I hear say that?
Yeah, that's okay, it's important.
Sorry. Sorry. I'm sorry, I traveled long to get here today, so I apologize.
Thank you for being here.
And, so, sorry, that's it on the Safe Place. I'm going to take a start all over again. Okay, so next is ASAP, which we are allotting $24,775. I would like to recognize Alan Bell, as I go to talk about this. Alan Bell was on the original board, which was almost 28 years ago, and has stuck with this. And to see somebody stick with something they believe in, the way Alan has stucked with it, I just think it's important that we recognize people like that, that volunteer their time for such a long period on the program. They have a new director and a new outreach program, and they're trying to reach more educational prevention programs, both through the Boys and Girls Club with collaborations, trying to work with, they're doing a program with the New School, and, but we're still trying to get a way to get them into our public school district to be able to teach some of these classes. We're, they're just not getting in the door there. We'd like to, we'd like to see that encouragement there. And they're also working on more forums. We believe that what they're doing is extremely important to the community and endorse what they're doing. Elder Services of Cape Cod is still run. Sherry Hunt runs it here on the island. That is our Meals on Wheels program. That Meals on Wheels program costs us 10%. We pay 10% of the ongoing budget to run this program for the island. It services meals five days a week, and it does the meals at the Salt March Center. We actually believe that this is one of the only, what we, you see up here is we don't do a lot in the Elder Services part. We, they tend to not get as much funding towards things, and we believe that this is a very important part of the town's human services. So, it's a great program. Health Imperatives is run by Julie Kehoe, she's the CEO, and so Health Imperatives requested $75,000. We're awarding them $60,000. Health Imperatives is run on island by Sunny Daly, and out of all the organizations, they'll tell you that these guys have done phenomenal, phenomenal work this year. Not only are they doing the SAFE program, they are, they've increased their WIC program. Their clientele has, over the last three years, they've had 100% increase in clientele. They are offering a transgender program in, starting in March. They have clinical hours twice a week. They do a young parenting program that they're also working with the community school with. They are also offering a free drug to anybody. It's a pre-AIDS drug, which is, the shot itself can cost somebody up to $16,000, and the shot, through a grant, is free, and they're working with the local, doctors to provide this service. They are somebody that we want to commend on how they had goals, and they surpassed their goals, and continue to reach for the stars in that program. Fair Winds has requested a hundred and-
Forty.
Forty thousand. We're, we're awarding them 113,000. Fair Winds has, also in, underneath them, has the Mentoring Youth Program. We have seen a huge change in Fair Winds and in their fiscal responsibility to the town in Nantucket. They have made huge changes by bringing in Manage Hub, which is overseeing both their fiscal and the daily operations and helping them run that. It's opened up a better forum for the employees and for each part of the office. The services Fair Winds provides for the town are very important in the sliding scales. Should be noted that this year, they, the sliding scales, they've actually used up already from fiscal year 2018 because of the need. The mentoring- The mentoring youth program is the only program that we actually saw some concern because we were actually not informed of the fact that they weren't providing two of the services this year, but they have hired somebody new, who we're looking forward to seeing that they get that program back up and running. Martha's Vineyard Community Services, and I know everybody asks Martha Vineyard Community Services, they're actually, their office is in Martha's Vineyard because of the fact that they do have a community building there. But Kathy Hackett, who comes over here, is actually from the Cape and provides services now to 16 families. Some of the families she's been providing these services with for over 30 years. We think that the $18,000 that they request is one of the greatest investments the town makes because she not only provides them with advocacy, she brings them to doctor's appointments, she helps them set up testing, she's here on the island to advocate and to provide educational programs to our teachers and support staff. So we believe that this is a great investment. South Coast Legal Services requested 4,500. We awarded them 4,500. They offer once a month services in the court district here. And it's district court, they do not do, and they offer services in regards to social security, rental benefits. They do not either, they offer immigration, but not through the South Coast Legal Services, but they do redirect people to a Boston branch. This actually just covers the costs or helps cover the cost of them coming over to the island. The Interfaith Council is the rental program, Fuel and Food Pantry. They have this year already awarded $120,000 in housing benefits. There, I think there was 4,586 visits to the food pantry this year. Their demand, they've seen raise, rise continually. We believe it's a very important part of the community and we support, we voted on $70,000 for them. Nantucket Cottage Hospital Social Services is the social service department of the hospital. They have two new people taking over Peter McKay's position. They provide social services like we don't have anywhere else in Massachusetts. Most hospitals do not provide the social services that they do. They provide not only insurance, but they do veterans. They help get families to and from Boston through the Holgate Program and a few other programs that are up at the hospital. They help families place people in needed for mental health and drug rehab. We support the efforts that they're doing. We understand for the first year, the number is high that you see there in their requests. And the reason that is high is that for the first time, they're actually looking at what it costs them to run that department on what they give for the community effort. That is not based on what they run for the office, but that is what the community effort of the social service department is. We think it's a vital source to the island, and so we supported them with 113,950. Small Friends is, of course, one of our only daycare systems that runs from about quarter to eight in the morning till about 5:30. This program will provide, help provide the nutritional program, and it provides the after-school program or the extended day program. We believe that in supporting the families on the island through this program, it helps the whole island community work, and we understand the vitalness of this program. The Civic League made a presentation to us and we opted to say that what they wanted did not fit into our category of human services. Cape Mediation is a new, new to us, and they are actually mediators in the district court. It helps both slow down the court or speed up the court system and help resolve things out of the court. So we believe that it was a great program to endorse. We did look at this year at getting almost 50% more in requests. It's a large number. And it shows to us the need in the community, which is great. But we also understand and respect the amount of money that the town delegates to this. So, that's my.
Thank you, Dorothy, for all your work. I know this is a long process, right? Is this, you guys spend six months, three months digging through all these?
Well, actually, we get them in November and we start the deliberations in December and go through it. And we go in, and in the deliberation process, we actually, they come in and present, and then we go in and do site visits and then do follow-ups if there's questions. And then I spend more time following up with each of the organizations afterwards. Any questions?
Matt, do you have a quick question on, what's the history of the CRC? Is this, we have this for five years, 20 years? Has it always been 450? Who decides the number? Just as a little, for the public to understand.
Sure. The CRC has been around for quite a while.
Since 1983, I think?
Well, the Council for Human Services has been around since then. The CRC came into being after that. I'm not sure of the exact year, but it was codified sometime within the last 10 to 15 years. I'd have to double check that. The allocation in the past three or four years has been increased to 450. It was 450 this year, 450 last year, I think it was 400 or maybe 430 the year before. It was in the threes prior to that, but it's, I mean, it's pretty steadily been increasing.
And this is part of the budget process, comes out of the general fund?
Yep.
Okay. I'm just curious, because as, as, as things keep increasing for human services, looking at that next five years.
Hopefully not to get people's hopes up, but hopefully at some point there will be a marijuana dispensary that we will be deriving tax revenue from. And we've already, through Town Meeting vote, established a fund to put a percentage of that into. And I think our plan right now is to see how that pans out and maybe we dedicate more going into the future.
My comment, my other comment on this is a well-run committee, and this is an example of the reporting and the oversight and that we should be getting from, you know, this is, this is the way, what it should be. You know, we've got the, we've got an example every year from you guys of what you did and why you did it. We have it memorialized and it's in the record. And it's not, you know, I think it's the right way to do it, so you guys should be commended.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Deanne.
Quick comment. My name is Deanne Atherton, and many, many years ago, I was on the Human Service Grant Review Committee. I just have to say a big thank you to Dorothy. I can't believe she's still at it. I think her commitment is Herculean, and the difference that she has made in the lives of children and families in this community are just outstanding. And I just wanted to recognize her with a big thank you.
Thank you, Deanne. Do we need to make a motion just to approve that, or is it? Are we okay?
You can certainly endorse it if you wanted to, but it's basically already in the warrant.
Okay, just making sure we didn't need anything. I saw you look up. All right. Second item here, discussion on answers to questions posed by Nantucket Coastal Conservancy regarding the Sconset Beach Preservation Fund. And I, this is, it's kind of an extension of when we met in December and January, but I think it's a little different. I think the overall goal here is to look at where are we right now in this whole process? And I met with some of the Coastal Conservancy members yesterday thinking about, you know, how to make the most effective use of our time. And I think everybody saw in their packet everything that was in there. Read on, feel my, any comments before we have the Conservancy come up?
No, just that I really wanted to say that I think these kind of, there's a little more open-ended conversation about it, but it is such a big issue, and we have been so reactive to it. So looking at this, or the memo from almost a year ago, thinking, I'm glad that we have that in the first place to remind us where we're at. But then again, to have an opportunity to discuss some of these things that we haven't, that we don't have answers to yet, without being under pressure of a decision right in front of us. So I do appreciate this being on the agenda.
Thank you. I talked, had a good conversation with Barbara yesterday, and we kind of narrowed all those questions from the April document to alternate access, sand, and then Judas going to talk about, I don't even know how to describe the title issues. So Barbara, did you want to, did you want to start with some of your questions?
Well, actually, I would like to make, I would, I would like to make one point, but we want to listen to you. And I just want to make sure that it's clear that we didn't narrow the questions to these three. What we thought we were doing was identifying a few things that would be most important and most useful to start with. But there's a lot more that needs, so I want to make sure that we are quite clear that it's not these three and we're done. It's many, many things that unfortunately you guys have to wrestle with, and we think we're entitled to understand. So other than that, but what we want to know is where you are and what you've learned about them. I mean, for example, on something as supposedly clear as alternate access, what we've heard from you folks is completely different from what we heard the applicant say in the ConCon. And we want to know what the rules are. And then, well, in any case, I mean, you know, and then on the warrant article for the $500,000, we thought we, the town, the civilians weren't on the hook. So there's just a lot we'd like to understand, but you have more information than we do, and we'd like you to tell us, please.
So maybe we can start there. Mr. Pucci is here to answer any of our legal questions, but I think the first question in this last email that we had about the alternate access and who pays for it, and I think there's some confusion, they're two different, two different issues. Can we talk about, maybe that's you, Libby, that what exactly the $500,000 is for?
The $500,000 that's in the 2019 Annual Old Town Meeting as a recommendation in Article 10 is an estimate that we obtained from our engineers to examine relocation of the entire road, not one very small section of it. This, this has come up on and off with, with the board over the last two or three years. And at the staff level, we've had some amount of discussion about if there's a need to relocate Baxter Road, how are we going to do it? And I think we've at least all preliminarily agreed, it's not just a matter of moving the road from where it is now over a few feet, because there are houses and wetlands and topography and other things in the way of that. So it's going to have to be probably some kind of a series of access roads that run possibly from Sanctity Road in or maybe from some other point in. We just don't know. So that is the purpose of appropriating the funds to do an evaluation of what are the options to, for relocation? What utility issues do then, do need to be addressed? Sewer water, stormwater? Are there environmental issues that need to be addressed? This would not address property takings, that would have to be a separate effort, as well as, you know, all the things that go along with property takings, appraisals and potential damage awards and that type of thing. So this is meant to be a comprehensive look at what are the ways in which Baxter Road could potentially be relocated? This, this, I guess you could say we're starting at Baxter Road, but this may be an effort that is going to be happening around the island for other types of infrastructure.
This isn't connected to this project. We should be doing this regardless if there's any.
Yeah, I would say it probably came out of this project, but it is something that is standalone.
Jason, I think, I would say it did come out of the project. I think one of the mistakes we made the first go-around is not looking at this big enough. And, you know, we don't, when we, if, what I see is happening out there is, is long-term is retreat. And retreat is going to be messy, and it's going to be contentious, and it's going to have, you know, the staff is going to have to do a lot of things like this on top of everything else they have to do to find a way to do it. And so that's just sort of a general comment, you know, and there's issues with abandoning a road. You have, there's certain rules and the ways you have to do it. And so the more of that we can negotiate and have people agree on, the better we'll be as a town. And the other thing to think about, just because there's money spent, we have to spend money before we can better it. So anything, look, that $500,000 is a drop in the bucket. If we have to spend 4 million, or 8 million, or 10 million, and then better that over a neighborhood, there'll be a, you know, they'll, we'll have to have a, you know, that money will have to be voted and appropriated and spent before we can then charge it back. You know, but Joe, just because we have, there's money there doesn't mean that everyone's going to pay that. If we, you know, if it's money that's legally allowed to be bettered, it will be, it will be returned back to the taxpayers over the betterment period, so.
George, did you have something?
Just following up to clarify, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. George Pucci from KP Law, Town Council's office. Just in terms of the clarifying, in terms of what has been spent and what the $500,000 is that Libby had addressed, that's different than the alternative access agreement for a possible breach to provide access to the north end of Baxter Road. That project, as part of your ascent to allow SBPF to apply for the project expansion, not to agree to the project expansion, but just to agree to allow them to apply, one of the conditions that you put on that was that they provide funding for a shovel-ready project for the alternative access to north end of Baxter Road called for in the existing agreement. So that work has been done and paid for and provided to Libby. She engineered that process. The, the $500,000 that you're talking about does not have to do with the potential relocation to provide access in the event of this breach, possible breach contemplated by the existing alternative access agreement. It goes more to your long-term planning efforts with regard to coastal erosion generally. And one issue, just to follow up on Matt and Matt's comments, in terms of the history of this, when you were considering the project expansion, SBPF's notice of intent and request for ascent to that notice of intent to apply for project expansion, the discussion did come up about long-term plans, that even if the existing project were expanded, you're eventually talking about probable need for the relocation of the road anyway down the line. So you started to think, well, what, what would a project, possible project expansion look like? What types of issues would we want to request from SBPF? If they're, if they're truly trying to partner with the town to address infrastructure issues there, what are the potential things that we may want to request from them in the event we contemplate a possible license or lease agreement down the line? And that's when the, the concept of the need to probably relocate Baxter Road in its entirety at some point in time down the line came up. So as part of your efforts toward that, the initial contemplated outlay would be for an engineering study to determine what types of takings would be involved and what that relocation of the entire road would look like. And have that done in time so that, again, not acting reactively to SBPF, but in the event that they obtained an approval for their project expansion for you to then, you know, possibly impose conditions that would relate to them paying for the full design and build out of the eventual contemplated relocation of Baxter Road in its entirety. So they have not agreed to that at this point, but you're, the funding for that and this concept was the board trying to be proactive about what you're facing possibly in the future and possibly negotiating that with SBPF in the event of a project expansion.
Thank you, George. You have a question?
I was just going to elaborate a little bit more when we started to look at the eventual other, other possible places that this could breach over time as the erosion continues or even if there's some, if the project were approved and it did go in, it's probably, it's not going to be forever, most likely. That when you look along the map, there's a series of perpendicular streets to Baxter Road. And then there are some larger chunks where there's not an access street readily available, and that we really will need to identify where easements might need to be taken. Even on the cross streets, then there will be some kind of easements that will need to be worked out between properties so you can access basically from the rear of certain. so you can access basically from the rear of certain properties if, if a whole section of the road were to go. And I think that's something we're going to have to plan for, like island-wide. We're just, this one is very much in the forefront right now because it's being discussed.
And we make sure we don't yard sale them by mistake. Absolute, accidentally, no, oops.
Which almost happened.
Yes.
Rick, do you have something?
My name's Rick Atherton. I just wanted to say that the discussion you just had is a good example of what I think you need to keep doing here more frequently. Just for example, I mean, I'm reasonably informed on this. I don't recall, I'm not saying it hasn't been said or isn't in writing someplace, but I don't recall a clear statement that the Warren article for the capital $500,000 was for Baxter Road presumably now from down near where it starts, all the way up near the lighthouse. That's a very different concept than many people would have assumed it was related to north of Baxter Road only. And, and I just want to emphasize that, so thank you for that. But you need to keep doing this on all of these issues. Another example, just in that conversation, is the betterment issue. You know, I think of what happened in Sheep Pond's Road as sort of the template going forward. Mr. Fee remembers that very well. And I don't, again, remember a clear statement from you folks that, given things that might work out in that fashion, that this, these funds could be bettered when and if we're ready to do so. That's a different statement from not making it clear, especially when you're going to town meeting to appropriate the funds. Otherwise, people are going to assume they're having to pay for it. So, thank you for the discussion.
Thank you, Rick.
First of all, I should have said when I stood up before that I'm Barbara Bund, you already knew that. Before we leave this issue of the alter, alternate access, could we please get some clarity from the board? You've been told by several people, by us, by Judith, and I don't know where else, that we heard in the Concom a couple of weeks ago, a representative from SBPF, a lawyer for SBPF, say that alternate access was contingent on approval of the expanded project, yes? And that wasn't our understanding and we would like you please to clarify for us, what is the board's understanding of what the agreement is? Does it, do we have to, do you folks have to agree or the Concom, or does everybody have to get on board with the expansion before that agreement could be invoked? And I, I guess there are two questions. Number one, what do you think now? And given that we have Rick and Matt in the room, was that the understanding at the time that you all made the agreement?
That wasn't mine, but, you know.
George?
No, that actually, select, select board member Fee's recollection is correct and it's also in line with how this alternative access agreement is worded. It is, it is contingent. And what's contingent is the commitments, the contractual commitments of the people who are granting the easement and for, for access to the north end of Baxter Road. They're committing to the amount of the damage award that would be to grant that easement that would be required for it. The, the property owners subject to this agreement are also agreeing that they will be subject to betterment assessments for the town's costs in, in constructing this alternative access route in the event it's needed. And that also they won't contest the amount of, of the betterments that they're going to be assessed, which is a, you know, a very attractive prospect for the town in terms of you trying to protect your taxpayer dollars in terms of the cost of this project. What it is contingent on is the alternative access contemplated by this agreement is to be considered an avenue of last resort, to be used only when all reasonable efforts to save Baxter Road in accordance with applicable regulatory requirements have failed. So that really goes to the existing project that, you know, as long as it's permitted by the Conservation Commission, you're attempting to prevent a breach in that area before this agreement will kick in. And it also talks specifically about reasonable efforts to save Baxter Road and it contemplates a, when in the opinion of a majority of three licensed Massachusetts civil engineers, one designated by the town, one designated by the other parties here too, and one designated by two such designated engineers, Baxter Road is no longer safe for passage due to coastal erosion. So that's adds to existing conditions of when this agreement would kick in. And, and you also have the ability, this doesn't preclude the town's ability to exercise municipal authority over a public safety emergency. In other words, if DPW or the town manager were to determine that there is an area that presents a public safety emergency in that area, this alternative, in, in the area that this agreement would cover, then you would be able to exercise your rights under the alternative access agreement. So it really, the way I would read this agreement is that it's not subject to approval of the expansion project.
Okay. And I don't want to try to speculate on what Representative from SBF meant by that comment, but I think that was good.
But George, during those meetings, did you hear that comment?
I did not, I missed the last two hearing sessions. I had a, I was at the 40B hearing on Monday, I don't know if it was made at that, but possibly before, scheduling conflicts with regard to the, the serve-side crossing project. So I missed the, the prior Concom here. I missed the last two Concom hearing sessions and have been updated by the Natural Resources Coordinator. But we, we didn't, he didn't update me on that particular statement by SBPF.
I think it was the meeting before this last one?
Yeah.
At what, the hour 12 mark or the hour 20 mark, something like that? Hour 12, okay, I got it right.
Does that make sense? I don't want to speculate too much on what, what the applicant said or didn't say, or what they meant by it with him not being here.
Yeah, one, one thing you have to remember.
I think if, I think if George had been there, he may have objected to that if it's not true. But you might want to ask George to take a look at that. It's on a video, I guess, or some kind of recording.
Yeah, and looking, you have to remember the timeframe too of this agreement. This was entered into when you were trying to, you know, deal with the situation of that prior project and, and what you were trying to accomplish by that. And, and remember too, not on the local bylaw provision, but on the state portion of the application, the Concom had been overruled by Mass DEP. They wanted this, the project that's there now, DEP overruled the commission's ruling on that. And, and part, that was in part what led to the settlement discussions with the working group that, that involved Matt and then Selectman Atherton and two Concom members. And, and so, you know, this, this came out of that. So, so even more so, I would, I would say this, this pertains to the existing, you know, project, that, that's part of reasonable efforts taken in accordance with regulatory requirements that are in existence under Concom's existing permitting. And so, in other words, I'm looking at, you would look at this agreement as to, you know, current conditions. If there were a breach tomorrow, you would be able to, in my opinion, you would be able to enforce this alternative access agreement to deal with that without being in any way bound to the proposed expansion project.
Question, George, while you're up. What if the, what if in the case of failure, we had five, a certain number of failure criteria? What if Concom says, you know, that it's, you know, it's failed? You know, we don't have to keep a failed project there based on this either, correct?
No, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And my point, I think one of the biggest things that we received from that negotiation was the no contest. I mean, that, that is, you know, if we had, you know, I don't know, I don't know the exact number of homeowners out there, but if we had all of those people contesting everything the entire way, it could be very expensive and take a lot of time. I think because of the situation we, we were in, we did a pretty good job of getting a no contest on this situation, so.
I just want to add on the alternate access as well, is that one of the things that I think is, has been really important about this assessment of the, the costs, the engineering costs, plus the $500,000 on the Warren article, is that we're finally starting to get an understanding of what that cost is versus the cost of any project anywhere. Well, this one specifically in Sconset, but we talk a lot about the short-term, you know, this, we know this project is going to be short-term, whether it's 10 years or 25 years. And then we know the costs of the project as is year to year and then we can finally evaluate that compared to what the cost is of relocation. And again, this is very applicable to other places on the island as well, but I think finally we have numbers that we can look at. And it bothers me quite a bit when we talk about short-term projects and I think about the potential for the ecological impact and what do we really, what does that really cost to the island and how do we value that? And it's, it's key to have these numbers plus whatever the numbers are to understand what the legal fees and the easements and the takings will be as well.
May I ask one, I'd like to ask one more follow-up now that we have Town Council explaining this. There were two meetings almost a year ago in which, I believe it was Josh Posner from SBPF, was asked whether SBPF would maintain the current installation if the expansion were denied. I can give you the tape and where to look on that if you need that, but... So I'm wondering if in fact the expansion were denied and if SBPF decided not to maintain the current, because they said they might not. So let's just hypothetically say they decide not to maintain it and there's a problem. Does alternative access then automatically kick in even if they made a decision? Is that a clear question?
I think it is, but my answer may not be clear. There was a lot to that question, because... So, can I reframe the question? Is it, is it, are you asking in the event, oh, in the event that the project, the proposed project expansion is denied by Concom, what, what the, are you asking what SBPF intends to do or what the town would do if SBPF refused to maintain the project?
Right, I'm just saying that they, they said there was a possibility that if there's not, they wouldn't say for sure they will maintain the current if the expansion... So, I'm not asking you obviously to predict what they will or will not do, but given that they said that was a possibility, I would like, we would like to understand what the requirements would be and whether you would therefore have the conditions to insist on alternate access. This is what the town is allowed to do, not what SPSF, SBPF would or would not do. Is that, is that a better...
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I don't, I don't think it would, it would trigger your ability to enforce the alternative access agreement, but it, it doesn't necessarily necessitate you to exercise the alternative access agreement. In the event SBPF said, well, you denied my project expansion, therefore, we're not going to maintain the existing project anymore. So you have contractual provisions in place already that they have to, if, if you choose that you want that structure removed, they have to pay to remove it and they have to do it in accordance with Concom permitting and, and permission and conditions to, to remove it without causing damage. They also have to indemnify you against any claims or damages caused by the removal of that structure in any way related to it. Even today, if a property owner says, you know what, I've noticed a decrease in, in the volume of the beach in front of my, you know, my neighborhood, I'm going to make a claim on this. SBPF has to indemnify you against that claim. So, so similarly, they have to indemnify you for any damage caused by either the existence of the structure or removal of that structure. They are not obligated, they are obligated to remove it at the point where Concom stops permitting it to be located there. So it's conditioned on that. There's a, basically a sunset built into it with that. In the event that they do not agree to maintain it, if you were to then choose, if they, if they refuse to maintain it any longer, you would have the option to, again, order them to remove it in a way that doesn't cause any damage. In the event though, that you decided that you want to keep that structure in place, that then, at that point, they don't have the obligation anymore to maintain it. And there was one question that came up today in this round of, you know, starting out with sort of three general questions about betterments. So if at that point you decided that, no, it makes sense, even though they're going to back out from maintaining it, we want to maintain this structure for our infrastructure concerns, you know, in our opinion, you would be able to better, assess betterment assessments for maintenance of that structure if it can be tied directly to benefit certain property owners by the maintenance of that structure. If you were to, to just make a policy decision that you want that, that structure removed, SBPF has to do that at their expense and again, has to indemnify you for any damage, you know, related to that. Did that go astray from your question or...
Don? Go ahead, Don.
Do you want to follow up first?
I don't want, I don't want to push this more than is usual. If, if they decided not to maintain it and there were a breach or a failure or whatever the definition is, then does the alternate access kick in?
Yeah, no, I, I think they would have the argument at that point that, you know, we, we don't want, we don't want to have this, we don't want to maintain this structure anymore. We want to, we want to remove it. Then, then you're sort of, you're, you're out on, then you're kind of on your own. You need to decide whether you're going to make them remove it at their expense or if you're going to take over the maintenance of it at that point.
That's what, that's what I was trying to, not very, not very skillfully trying to get at.
Right, there are so many contingencies on it, that's why I'm not, I'm trying not to give an unclear answer to it. But again, you know, you, you have to realize this is still tied to existing permitting and they are obligated to you for, for as long as, you know, that structure remains in place. And also subsequent there too. Say, you know, the removal of it causes unanticipated damages, but it's related to that. They are still tied in with an indemnification agreement with the town for any damages in any way related to the structure.
Is it feasible if they, if their project doesn't get approved for the expansion and they decide that they are not going to pay to maintain the existing structure anymore, for us to not necessarily ask them to take it out immediately to agree to maintain it for a period of time while we put in the alternative access?
Yes, I, I think that would be a, I think it would be reasonable to require them to continue to maintain it, regardless of what happens with permitting for the expanded structure. It's a, it's a structure that they've put in place under their agreement with you, so...
But their agreement contemplates the expansion, which is what is really wanted by the group because that's what actually goes in front of their homes.
It does. I mean, you know, again, it, all the contingencies you can sort of imagine that could occur, you know, you would be subject to their arguments on, on those issues. That, no, this was clearly part of it. The three-year permit that we were called for here clearly contemplated that it wasn't causing damage. We were going to go for the expansion project and you were going to support that expansion project in that event. So it, it is somewhat, I, I think it's a practical matter. As a practical matter, and this is where you have to be careful as well, and I've tried to be careful about answering all the liability-related questions. It's difficult to, it's, I would recommend against, you know, providing legal opinions on all potential contingencies and what position you might take in certain areas with regard to the contracts or any other legal issue involved in it. And to a certain extent, SBPF is sort of doing that as well. They're, they're making this claim that's kind of causing confusion, saying, well, we're not obligated under this and we're not obligated under that if, if you don't approve this expansion. expanded structure. However, having said that, you know, as a practical matter, if, as a result of the CONCOM hearing process, you, there's a, there are compelling reasons to deny that expanded project, I would argue it would be very difficult for SBPF to then turn around and say, well, we're just removing the existing structure. Because if the existing structure is working so well as they say that it is and it's not causing adverse effects, then why wouldn't the world, wouldn't they want to continue maintaining that structure, you know, as they've been doing? That would be a sort of a practical on the ground argument that you'd be making at that point. But again, you know, I, I think they're, to a certain extent, they're trying to hold some issues with leverage to try to, you know, persuade a favorable permitting decision in that. But, but what they'd really do, you know, is, is really anybody's guess.
Jim, you had a?
Some more of an editorial comment so that, you know, the challenge here is how do we achieve some level of transparency based on the questions you have and yet not compromise or, or reduce the town's ability to negotiate in a executive session? I can tell you that these are the kinds of discussion we're having now, which is nice. These are the things we talk about in executive session about this project and we go through all the scenarios and to the best of our ability, we direct town council after we reach some consensus and agreement on negotiating certain terms. So, you know, I just, I just put that out there as a potential concern because we don't want to do anything that would inhibit the town's position. And when we ask town council, because I was just ready to ask them, what about this? Because this is what I do in these, these executive sessions and I'm like, no, I just, you got to stop. So I just put that as a cautionary note.
Any more, a couple more comments, questions on alternative access? And then we want to, I want to move it over to Sand and some other questions so we're not, so we can just move it along. Judith?
Judith, I'll be. Just in terms of what we're discussing, the reason that this is so important is that a part of the, the law that the Conservation Commission is considering now is they have to come to a determination or a finding that there are no feasible alternatives to hard armoring 4,000 feet of the bluff. And so, so whether or not alternative access is a feasible alternative is something that they have to consider. So when they're told by the applicant's attorney that alternative access is predicated upon them permitting the expansion, you can see the difficulty. And if we have reached clarity with that, I'm, we're hoping that town council will make it clear to the Conservation Commissioners that what they were told very emphatically and very affirmatively is not so.
That's why I made the point earlier, we should close that loop. And so I hope that happens.
Judith Wagner, I want to go back to help an easier question, not infinitely easier, but more where we were earlier, which is the intersection between this alternate access and what's up for the town meeting consideration. So if there's a plan potentially that you're starting to invest in to move all of Baxter Road, does that mean there'll never be anything related to the alternate access agreement that is brought to bear? For example, you had negotiated understandings about what the payment would be to use certain cut-throughs and things like that, areas that could potentially be a site for a road. And I just want to be sure I really understand how those two pieces come together, if you don't mind. Thanks.
I'll try. Yeah, if you want. I, I think that what we're talking about with the $500,000 is different. Alternative access is one road on the northern end. It's costing us, you know, what is it, $500,000 for two, a million dollars for two people to give up an easement, not even giving up fee rights to their property, just an easement for those two specific properties with some pretty stringent rules on who can park where and walk. So that, so we take that one road near the golf club.
$2.50 each.
Yeah, $2.50 each, okay. $2.50 each, so $500,000, $2.50 each. So we, that's, that's an example of what we may have to do in three or four other places on the southern end. You know, so that's where, that's where you start to say, okay, this is the example of what happened in a non-contemptious negotiation, somewhat non-contemptious negotiation where people were mostly on the same side. What's going to happen if we're in a contentious negotiation on the southern end with two or three other, two or three other access points? Like Dawn's talking, they're going to, probably going to have to come in from, what is it, Popus Road somehow. And there's a couple of them existing, but some of them are paper roads. There's a bunch of work that has to be done and it's not, and it could be expensive and it could be contentious. So what I was thinking is how do you widen this? You know, how do you widen our view so that we get the result that I think you're asking? How do we handle it if it breaks south? How do we handle if it breaks in the middle? You know, it's, it's sort of, it's different.
I appreciate that. I'm just not sure that that was what I was asking, if you don't mind my following up.
I'll try again. I'll try again.
The, what I'm wondering is insofar as you could see some of what's in the alternate access understandings, you had already thought through and identified some locales where there might be need to put access under some circumstances. So what I'm trying to understand is when the town says you're going to put to town meeting proposal for half a million to do design work and engineering work, does that totally put aside anything that was previously considered or is that still part of the conversation for purposes?
You can try. Maybe you'll, that'll look at me.
That doesn't put aside any of what was already done. This alternative access only gets to that end of Baxter Road. That was where the breach was close to occurring, that gets to those houses at the very end and gets to the lighthouse. It, it does not take any of that away. This would all be additional, that it will be more predicated on actual, like, properties that still have houses on them going. It would be a longer term, though, and all of the different perpendicular to Sangati and Baxter accesses and how you come into some of those and then get easements to go behind the properties that are on the non-water side of Baxter Road now for access, which is much more long-term. Does that, does that answer it? Doesn't take away anything that's already been done.
So this isn't clear to the people that live and breathe this every day, the Coastal Conservancy, I can imagine with the general public. So I think that there needs to be some, maybe Libby and your kind of narrative about town meeting Warren articles or somehow that we clarify that because that's pretty important and it would save a lot of conversation at town meeting.
A couple of things happened too when you were presented with the, with the project expansion proposal that with SBPF seeking permission to apply. Then you started thinking about it and, and you know, in the, in that interest of being proactive, you were thinking, you know, this $500,000 that you're talking about for the Warren article was, came out of that discussion that you had thinking, all right, where are we really at? What are we doing here? You, you were educating yourself both as to what happened with the existing project and you were looking at it saying, what are our long-term planning efforts in this? And, and so one of the things that came up when they asked for your permission to the notice of intent for the project expansion, you kind of, you looked at everything that was in place already. And one of the things that you noticed was even under this existing alternative access agreement for the north end of Baxter Road, you noticed that you didn't have a shovel-ready project for that. You know, one of the outstanding items that SBPF had committed to had not been fulfilled. So that's when you got the funding in place and, and then they did provide you with the necessary plans for a shovel-ready project. If you had to go forward with that tomorrow, you've got a shovel-ready project to go ahead and do that project under the existing alternative access agreement. Then the $500,000 though is, you're talking about your long-term planning efforts irrespective of what happens with the project expansion. So while you may, you know, in the event that that project expansion is approved and, and you know, it goes forward and they come back to you that they're seeking permission and through either a license or a lease agreement, you could bring, you know, that long-term planning effort to the table in that negotiation process, but you're by no means tied, it's totally independent of, of the existing project or the possible expansion of the project, you know, what you're thinking about for long-term planning.
That's what you said earlier, Matt, that's planned retreat.
Well, that's, that's what's, I still think that's what's happening here. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't feel like that from when, you know, from some of what the proponent is saying, but, but they also realize they're not, this isn't going to be there forever. I think they know that. It's sort of.
Well, that segues into the next discussion about sand too, of whether, even if the project went in, how long is it sustainable for? And you have to have the backup plan if we agree that the sea level's rising and the erosion's going to continue around the island.
Are we okay to, oh, sorry, Rita?
I just wanted to bring up that, and I think you made a good point on about whether it's 900 feet or 4,000 feet, there might be a point where it's infeasible. People, the proponents decide that they, it's not affordable, it's just not possible, and would decide to abandon the project. And there is potentially a lag time between that and then an alternative access going in place. And so it does come back to who pays and how does that happen? And that's something, again, to apply to any project and any size project and something that, you know, we do need to consider.
Or one or both of them fail. You know, the, the current one or a future one fails and it's, and CONCOM requires it to come out. I mean, you still have, it has to come, you know, you still have to have your, you know, ducks in a row and everything else.
It's really a complex network of alternative accesses that will be required in this case. It's not like Sheep Pond Road where it was able to just move behind because there was conservation property, if I'm remembering that correctly.
Any other thoughts on this? Can we move to sand? Okay, let's talk about sand.
Let's talk about sand.
Where do we start with sand? Maybe what is, what do we want to talk about on the select board that's under kind of our, under our purview versus CONCOM? What they decide? And how much does CONCOM decide on sand? Just even for, I know a lot of us here know the difference, maybe not the public. Rita?
I just have a question. We are doing a study on littoral drift or something that Chuck is working on.
The sediment?
Sediment deposit.
We're not, we're not working on it yet. We need to make an appropriation. It's not even in a capital item yet, but we do have an upcoming meeting internally to talk with some potential partners to fund that study, but we're way, ways off of it. But I would say we're definitely exploring that and would like to do that.
Yeah. I think for me in terms of sand, I, I think there's definitely, my big concern is the quantity, but I think from a sort of a policy point of view is, are we okay with, you know, ultimately the sand won't be coming from the island. We don't know how good a match it will be and we don't really understand sediment transportation. So we're just looking at a lot of unknowns and accepting unknowns with these kind of projects. And I think from, again, you know, how much sand, how many of these type of projects are we okay with because they do have an impact? We just don't know what it is yet. And, and I think my understanding is it's pretty clear that cities and towns all over the coast are looking for sand. So there is sort of a general, an acceptance that we will be running out of sand.
Just for clarification, CONCOM decides on the type of sand, they test it, look at it, but not really where it comes from, effects on infrastructure, anything like that. It's just they do testing on the type of sand. They can say, oh no, we don't like the sand. Send it back. I'm, I'm making a generalization.
Yeah, and I think that's where, again, where is the select boards? Where do we comment on sand? To me it is a, to me it's, it's policy because it's a style of erosion control that has unknown ecological impacts. As well as potentially if we had five of these projects all over the island, there's the realities of trucking. I think we can't put a number on it, but there's definitely a sort of anecdotal assessment of quality of life impact on that type of armoring.
I have some, something I can add on that, I think.
State your name.
Maureen Phillips from the Coastal Conservancy. Excuse me. The, first of all, at the last CONCOM meeting, Greg Berman from Woods Hole Seegrant gave his expert opinion about the impact of, of the existing project and, and the potential impact of the expanded project in, in various ways. And two, two things he especially focused on were, okay, is this going, if this gets expanded, and what's going to happen to the, the downdrift and updrift beaches? And, and then he also talked about the need for continuing, in order to keep these sand geotubes from be, becoming hard armoring, they have to be covered with sand. And so the, the whole issue of what happened in the storms from last winter and the many, many days that they weren't covered with sand. So he was looking at that data and saying, okay, if these things want to stay, we're going to have to keep, someone's going to have to keep bringing sand to these. And, and a couple of the commissioners were, gee, what happens when they're uncovered because it's a storm and you can't bring sand off island? And so Josh Posner, and I, and you may just want to look at NTV and, and watch the meeting, I think this, from this week. I think it's, it's useful to hear what Greg said and what Josh said and what our group said and everything. It's, there's a lot of good information there besides Greg's opinion in the packet. But Josh Posner was, was clear that, you know, there isn't going to be enough sand on island for the, the, even in the, excuse me, in the, the near term, if you will, for maintaining the existing project. And he said they're thinking, they're thinking about getting, you know, having it dredged offshore and barging it in and, you know, and finding other sources maybe on the Cape, but, you know, it was not, when the CONCOM was, was pressing on that issue about being able to get enough sand, they were saying, well, we'll find it. You know, they were, you know, we'll find it somehow, somewhere. And so that's, so the sand issue is, 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 I think, quite important, no matter if they just keep, if the CONCOM decides not to license the existing thing, there's still going to be a sand nourishment issue and there's still going to be potential for destruction of the updrift and downdrift beaches. And just one additional point on sand and the fact, excuse me, and the impact on that neighborhood of thousands of dump truck loads of sand, the DPW actually, and part of that's, Libby, I think in the answers that we asked for, so in your packet, Rob McNeil is looking at damage that they believe has been caused to the roads in Sconset from the trucking of the sand and looking, and he's going to be talking to the SBPF about, you know, some kind of, of arrangement with them. And I don't know anything more than what was in the packet, but, you know, this is, has a ripple effect. So it's not just the sand on the beach, it's getting the sand to the island, it's getting the sand to the beach. So it's a, it's a really, really, you know, complex thing. And of course, it all gets expanded if they, if they expand the, the project. So I just wanted to point that out. There's some really good info from the last CONCOM meeting and, and Greg Berman's opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Rick?
Just on the sand issue again, from a little different perspective, from the community perspective, because they're not, SBPF is not the only user of the sand. They're also not the only user of the sand in terms of erosion. You know, the North Shore, I don't know how many Corbagg projects there are, each one has a requirement from the CONCOM to have sand placed upon it. And those projects are growing. And if you were projecting out, pretty soon we'll have them from, you know, Capom Pond all the way to Smith Point. I mean, you get the idea. And it seems to me one thing you could think about doing that might be helpful in your sort of public policy discussions. How much sand is there available in the existing pits? Can other on-island pits be opened up? Because that was mentioned at the CONCOM. Can other on-island pits be opened up? Because that was mentioned at the CONCOM, that's a possibility. And given the utilization in erosion, how much is gonna be left for construction, roads and so forth? And, and the implication of that, of course, is that scarcity is gonna impact price. So that, in the end, SBPF may be willing to go off island, but we all may have to go off island as well. Is there a way to ask them to do that and save on-island sand for the broader community utilization? I'm not sure that's possible, given a free market economy. But I think that, I'm trying to get at something you need to think about from a public policy point of view. Sand could obviously triple in price on island, or something like that. And that's gonna have a real impact on our economy, so.
So I can't help myself from doing the thing I said I shouldn't do, but, you know, I'm thinking this in a way that this project is performing somewhat as a public utility. They're, they're providing this, this kind of erosion's, you know, control. And, you know, I know public utilities, if, you know, they have, they have an obligation to make sure they're able to provide their electric service for the future. And one way they do that is to demonstrate their existence of long-term contracts for fuel. So that might be, if I, you know, if I were sitting down and that they have an obligation to provide sand, AKA fuel, I would wanna make sure that they have contracts in place to do that.
My name's Dirk Ragavane. I'm an attorney. I represent the Quinnet Squam Association. It is a homeowners group to the north of this project. And it's been participating at the Conservation Commission, as well as before the Selectman a number of years ago when this first project came through. And it will continue to do that. But the Board of Directors of the Quinnet Squam Association asked that I bring this by, and I think, listening to the meeting, this might be the point to insert it. It is a letter concerned about sand primarily. And it's sand issues that don't directly come up at the Conservation Commission. So it's one of the issues that sort of goes into the scope of what you're talking about here. The reason one puts sand in front of hard armoring, including geotubes, is because by preventing the bank from eroding, you're taking away the sand that goes into the system and flows down drift, which happens in this, my client's case, to be the north of the project. The sand in Squam along the beaches comes from the banks of Sconset. So you hard armor Sconset, you're gonna impact those beaches. And DEP knows that, CONCOM knows that, and so they're, and actually SBPF knows that. So that, in order to mitigate that damage, they say, well, keep putting sand in front of this. So when the storms come, the sand goes into the system and it keeps supplying the beaches. And so our project, this project, doesn't adversely impact properties to the north or to the south in a way that they, they wouldn't be impacted in the absence of this project. So the sand becomes critical to preventing damage to the people to the north of this project primarily, but also to the south as well. So this letter, which I'm not gonna read to you or anything like that, it just concerns sand mitigation and the issues involving sand mitigation, such as trucks and noise and all that stuff that the Conservation Commission cannot address. And it also wants to look at the finances of that, obviously, because right now, Sconset Beach is funding this, Sconset Beach Preservation Fund. I know they've put together an escrow account for the removal of the geotubes. But Sconset Beach Preservation Fund is a nonprofit which has no assets and nothing to go after in terms of money. So if they stop maintaining the sand, either the town is gonna have to start doing it or else have damage resulting to the neighboring properties. Or the, you know, the geotube, you know, say, CONCOM says, okay, you've stopped maintaining it, the geotube has to come out. Anybody who thinks that's an easy, you know, the CONCOM just says, okay, you know, I was the administrator for years. I can't imagine showing up and saying, I'd like you to take this geotube out. I mean, obviously, we'd be done with letters, but you know that it's not gonna be done easily. There, if this system's failing, it's because the bank is collapsing on top of the geotubes. So now the geotubes are supporting the bank. In order to remove the geotubes, you're gonna end up having the banks that is now slid down on top is all gonna come out with it. So the issues about, does it need a new Conservation Commission permit? Does it need, I mean, you can just order it, but it's gonna cause damage. Does DEP wanna get involved? And then, if you own a, you know, if you own a house in Sconset, are you gonna just say, okay, well, we'll do it? Or are you gonna go to court to fight it? So putting these things in and guaranteeing the, the sand is, actually, I mean, taking them out is gonna be really hard. So this, guaranteeing the sand forever so that it doesn't damage the neighboring properties to the north and the south is critical to this. And that means it has to, you have to need, you have a need to look at things beyond what CONCOM can do. All CONCOM can do is say, you have to maintain this forever. But in terms of your agreement and licensing for use of the beach, you can say, how are you gonna maintain this forever? Is it, you know, just saying, okay, well, we can always make them take it out, or they promise to, or, you know, all of those things. I mean, you, I know you're already aware of it, you've been talking about it. But I wanna put it in the record from the Quinnet Squam Association, that concern, which I'm sure they will address further later. Thank you.
Thank you, Dirk. Any comments from the board?
I'll make one, before we get off sand, I'll make one comment. In Holland, what they'll do is they'll, they'll get sand from other projects or from the other digging, or they'll get it from off the coast. They'll put acres and acres in a specific area, and it's sacrificial sand to flow into the system either direction. So they'll, you know, they'll find the right place to put, you know, millions of tons of sand, you know, they'll bring it up in, in, you know, huge tubes, put it on the coast to actually be used throughout the entire system. And so, you know, so we, you know, if we're gonna, we have to be thinking, you know, long-term, we need to be thinking along those lines. Because, you know, there's areas that we're gonna wanna protect and that we're gonna have to think differently. It can't just be, we don't do anything and nature will be fine, because nature's not gonna be fine. Nature's gonna, you know, it, we're gonna have sea level rise and it's gonna, you know, it's gonna take over half of downtown. It's gonna wipe out parts of Sconset and, you know, it's gonna breach Matic and take Matic away. So how do we handle those things? And how do we handle them in a way that doesn't impact other people? So I just think it's, you know, this is a big issue. And we're just, you know, sort of, we're right at the beginning. We're not really even close to what do we really have to do?
And I think that, you know, this being a huge issue, again, where sand really does affect us and what we have to look at is what is the impact to other properties downstream or upstream? And what do we do, again, if they maintain it forever or if they don't? And that is really what we are charged with to figure out.
I remember walking out of the movie Documentary Sand Wars, and it scared me. That wasn't, that didn't make me feel very good. I'm glad we're talking about it. Yep. One more comment and then we'll, Judith, we'll move on to the title. Yeah, after this.
My name is Ted Gilletti. I'm a resident here. Has the board considered engaging the services of the Center for Coastal Studies in Provincetown to do a sediment transfer study around the island? And if not, why not? Because I thought something like that would be completely relevant for consideration of a project like this, or any other project related to the coastline.
That's what we were talking about earlier.
Sorry?
That was, that's what we were talking about earlier.
That's with Dr. Mark Borelli?
Yes.
So the, the board is actually engaged in discussions with him?
Staff people have had discussions with him. And what I mentioned earlier was, I myself and some other staff have some conversations with the Nantucket Conservation Foundation scheduled for later in the month to see if they, we could partner with them for a study like that. Dr. Borelli has given us a proposal. And it's costly, so we don't have.
No, no free lunch, obviously.
No, we don't have the $400,000 or $500,000 on hand right at the moment for the study, but it is something that I think we'll be putting forward either through a grant opportunity or next year's capital process.
Having, having met Dr. Borelli and discussed these sorts of issues with him and some of his team, I think it's well, well worth the money spent to consider this kind of information in the decision-making process. Particularly for a project like this, but relevant to what Matt was talking about as well, in a broader sense, for the island, for the future, for planning. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Just as a comment too, on how big this gets, is that the sand can drift 27, 30 miles. And there are towns that have issues where barrier islands get formed from someone else's sand. Someone comes in and says, well, dredge it, use that sand again. And someone says, well, now you're protecting our coast. So this really does become, I, I think the sediment transportation study is key in, in understanding what, you know, we can never fully understand, but what some of the down-the-line conversations we're going to have, to have about impacts, whether it's in Quinnet or in Chatham.
I just wanna go back to the strategic plan and just have
Sand.
Coastal Resiliency and sand is just one giant call. Judith, do you wanna?
Thanks. Judith Wagner from Quinnet, speaking just on my own behalf. I tried to write a fair amount. I've gotten to meet with several of you. You've heard me come in before. When I retired up here, I took on a project of trying to understand some of the issues around beaches and property rights. So I've been working pretty hard whenever I can, trying to do what I can to understand title issues. So I went through and spent a lot of time with the deed vaults and found and provided you with the original documents and subsequent documents from when Mr. Flag, who was the developer of Baxter Road, and the proprietors established rights to the beach in, below Sankey Bluff, and also to Sankey Bluff itself. The reason I do that, I think that's not the only place on the island where you really need to be looking at what the actual legal rights are to the, the areas that you're now acting as stewards for, holding this in trust. But when you're having to make piecemeal decisions, as you've had to so far, you may not really have a full appreciation of what's happening to implicate the private rights. You may know that, but you may not really have a sense of the detail, the public rights. So for example, the beach easement there below the Sankey Bluff, it's, it's not the same as standard property law in Massachusetts, saying that we only really are thinking about the public trust below the low watermark, because it sets out specifically at 33-foot wide right-of-way for public use and public purposes. That is to be benchmarked against the high watermark and to move up and be protected even if there's further erosion. So if you're going to give expanded license possibly to SBPF, you should really be thinking about whether you're going to do some damage to that public right that was established way back in 1883 and, and so forth. There may also be other areas that, as you deal with these broader erosion issues, that you should be looking into. And one of the things I've wondered is whether you might try to bring some kind of declaratory relief action, or get an Attorney General's opinion or something of that sort, take into account the very distinctive property rights here in Nantucket, because there's differences in the vineyard, there's differences, there may be elsewhere along the coast, up, not here on the islands, but further up where there's nonprofits that hold lands in terms that are in trust or things of that sort. And I think unless you know that, you're really putting yourselves at risk of challenge. And I think too, that with provisions in the state constitution that protect natural resources, you really would be well served to look at that and to be well familiar with that before going on to have a further expanded set of licenses here or any other place. Second thing I wanted to say is I really urge you to think about the criteria and the priorities for the whole of the island. One of the reasons that it's so important to be working on coastal resiliency and thinking about how that plays out, I would think, for example, what Mr. Gilletti just said about putting money into a study about littoral drift, that that, in my mind, would be more in keeping with coastal resiliency activism needed now compared to putting in half a million for Baxter Road analysis that may be sometime in the future, if it's not the one that really you planned for at the time you granted the original license. Things I worry about are the Great Ponds. When I attended some of the coastal resiliency presentations and followed other ones that were held subsequently, it's very clear, when I live down that way, we walk out that way, very narrow area. And as you know, Sacagawea Pond breached last winter with the storms and took out a lot of Pulpus Road that the town had to repair. But it's not just Sacagawea Pond. So if I were thinking about priorities and criteria, I would be thinking that any license you give to allow any kind of use of land held by the town, or held particularly if it's in trust by the town on behalf of others, you should have extensive monitoring to track what's happening insofar as it may affect Great Ponds, wherever that would be around the island. You should be, I think, sorting out what the priorities are too. I don't live in Matic, but I think a lot about what will happen if Millie's Bridge goes out, or when you see what's happening in Townevers, or if we're talking about the sewer fields, things like that. I'm not sure that if I had to sit where you're sitting and try to decide which of those things come first, it'd be an easy choice. I mean, I was here last week and you talked about which of the marijuana proposals you're gonna take. And you only had two and picking one, but here you've got the whole island. So it's definitely not an easy thing to do. Last thing is, as has been raised by others, I've been going to the CONCOM meetings and following them on TV as well. And I think there's a real mismatch in part, at least, I don't claim that it's intentional, but I think that statements there don't necessarily square with some of the understandings that have been discussed tonight. So I think it's, it really is incumbent on you to have those meetings reviewed, to be sure you know what's being said by people with different viewpoints, what representations are being put in the mix, and that on behalf of the citizens, we really need you to be policing and being sure that we have shared understandings about what's going on, because individual citizens really aren't in a position to do that. So thank you for your attention, and I appreciate the chance for you to have this kind of conversation tonight.
Thank you, Judith. And I spoke with town manager and council today that I believe we're gonna have KP Law, Vicky Marsh, look into some of the title work. And not right now, but I think in April or May.
March, yeah.
Oh, March, okay. Also now, okay.
Just please be clear, I'm not trying to be your lawyer. This is historic interest of mine. I'm just, I feel as a citizen, this is such a special place and the natural resources are so sensitive. Any of us who have any skill set should try to bring them to bear and offer them to you to help you with this difficult work. So thank you.
I want the board to know that we're, the town council's looking into it, so we'll have some feedback there.
Yeah, what Judith is talking about is some, I, sort of the ownership of the beaches, ownership of the, sort of around the ponds and things, were something that started with the proprietors and with the prior owners. And, you know, we were part of New York, not Massachusetts, so potentially our rules are different. You know, we would have, and we've fought, you know, we've had legal issues with the Great Ponds and, and it took, you know, 30 years and, you know, and a judgment from the, you know, from a judge in the other side, but we won that one, more or less. And I think the issues are very complicated. Judith, just in her research over the last, you know, month or whatever, came up with something I didn't know about, that the Bluff Face itself was, you know, was written in to some of the early decisions and, in moving. And that mimics sort of what the proprietors had originally set aside for the island. And why we're different from Martha's Vineyard and the rest of, you know, Massachusetts is partly because of how we viewed it and when we viewed it and when we changed the rules. And so I think the tricky part, though, is, you know, if, you know, the state isn't gonna view it that way, the judges aren't gonna view it that way. Sometimes our, no offense, sometimes our new town council doesn't view it that way. And we need, and so we need to, you know, they will though, because they're working with us. But we need to, if we're gonna have this, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go to battle with this, we have to pick our battle. And we have to figure out which, you know, which one are we going to fight that we can win? Because if we fight this ill-prepared and not ready and lose, then we're under the state rules forever. So we, you know, we have to be really intelligent about, you know, when we pick the, when we pick that fight, we have to make sure we've done our research and that we understand. pick that fight, we have to make sure we've done our research, and that we understand that, you know, we have a, you know, a very good chance of winning. And so, that's part of why One Big Beach came about, was to try to get as much as we could of it, like willingly. The idea of One Big Beach was let people donate the land that they already don't own anyhow, but let them get tax credits, and then we, we end up with, you know, 10 pieces of land that have to be figured out, not 300. You know, that was the idea of it. Now, we haven't implemented that, there's a million other things going on. We should be thanking the One Big Beach people with a big party every year. I think the Coastal Conservancy should be the lead on that, you know. I think there's, you know, I think there's things like that that we as a community could be doing to better the, you know, better the beach access all the way around the island. And so, but I think it's not a simple equation. And there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of research, and a lot of work has to go in if we're going to make that historical legal right argument.
And I think this is a really important one, and I appreciate Judith's work on this, for all projects that come in front of us, how we deal with public trust and private property, and not just fighting anyone in one specific location. But again, I think in, in the conversation around coastal resiliency, we have to be consistent in understanding the public trust and our obligations, as well as the balance then with private property is, is key for homeowners and property owners to know what to expect if their, if their property is being eroded.
Yeah, we're going to hear from Deanne, but I want, after, we're going to wrap it up, but I want to talk just a little bit about, hold on, about next steps after we...
That would be great, Jason. Thank you. I didn't exactly hear, so I just wanted to clarify, is that we agree that our beaches are very special. Judith has done an inordinate amount of legal work. We are so fortunate to have her and to have her expertise, and it's clear that the beach, stretch of beach below the Bluff and Sconset is special and may qualify for special protection. So, can we have some indication from you that you will respond to the information that she's given you, or seek additional advice going forward, so this just doesn't remain in the ether?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, Vicky Marsh, town council, was looking into this, this month, and is going to get back to us.
Maybe I didn't hear that, Jason. I'm sorry. So, we can expect some action on that?
Yeah, that's already in the works.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So, I just want to give a little bit of time of, just to fill in the board, next steps. Maybe that's a question mark.
I'm wondering if we should maybe have George look at the meeting from the other night, and if needed, have a letter to clarify, or refute their statement? I'm not sure, but I think that sounds like a misunderstanding that could gain momentum.
Both the meetings that he missed. He missed two meetings.
Both meetings.
And I think in the future, I think it was, my understanding that town council is going to be present at every one of those, and I remember that. I've said that very strongly at the beginning, so if there's some scheduling conflict, somebody has to cover the other meeting.
I should just note, in my, I never defend myself to, you know, any critical comment from a board member, but in my own defense, there was some point in time where I was included in the scheduling for those hearings, and then I was taken off of being included in, you know, checking my schedule beforehand. So, that's, that's how this happened in the last two. And I'll also say it was a Nantucket-related conflict, not, you know, because I was, didn't feel like coming down that day. But, you know, I will make sure with the natural resources coordinator that we do some type of coordination to make sure that I'm available before they set these new dates.
Right. And I think if we haven't already, we'll send you the, that video and the time, and it's already been sent to us. We'll forward that to you.
But, but our commitment and ask and request that town council be present was something we communicated through the town managers, so I, you know, Libby can help you with administrative processes too.
I mean, this is really good, putting this on the, in the forefront of our minds from the elected in this body, and for the public. And even if there's no giant decision or anything that comes out of it, it's just, we kind of got to recap where, where we are right now, where everything stands. I think in May, we'll know more. June, you know, when Concom comes out with a decision or non-decision, or whatever, whatever happens there.
I suppose before that happens, are there any do not knows that we can answer? That would be a question that I would have. I read through them. But I don't know if there's anything that we can answer that we just haven't been able to get to yet. But if, again, if anything that we can answer before another decision would be helpful. And then coming back with KP Law's, more discussion around Judith's comments before May, before we're, again, in a decision-making situation, I think would be helpful. I also want to note that I, I believe as well that, you know, one thing that strikes me again is the size and the complexity of this project, and not losing track of the different things that are going on. And I think we are looking at a coastal resiliency coordinator for next year. And I think this would be the kind of project that they would, I imagine this would be the kind of thing that they would be in charge of.
Yeah, next year meaning next fiscal year, fiscal '20. We have budgeting. Hopefully, it will be approved by town meeting for that position.
Still, the position could start this summer or fall, ideally, in a perfect world.
We funded that real estate position years ago and still hasn't been hired, so I mean, I just...
I'm hopeful, Jim.
I do have three applicants, though, that just came in this week for that one.
Four what, four?
Real estate.
Real estate position.
But I, I hear you.
It was mentioned to me, and I want to bring it up because I don't know how the board feels, that some feel that this should have a work group around it. And I'm not sure if it's a work group of NSPPF, but I do think, again, in light of the complexity of coastal resiliency, that a coordinator might have, I just think that these are questions that go well above and beyond SBPF. So, in my mind, any kind of work group in the future would be trying to get the community to answer some of the things that so far the coastal resiliency plan hasn't really got at, are these why, island-wide, community-level discussions about what we're going to do. So...
Would this be within the purview of the coastal resiliency group that's working? Or are you thinking of another? I mean, could this be added to their job description?
The coastal resiliency coordinator?
No, don't you have a work group, developing, reviewing the coastal resiliency plan? No? We don't?
It's staff. From time to time, there has been a board member involved.
Okay, so I think, I, well, I think we should, for both, for that and for the broader issue. Because right now, I mean, there's a whole list of stuff we've heard about tonight, and, you know, I'd like to see them on one piece of paper, I'd like to get, you know, a work plan, I'd like to see some deliverable dates, and who, what resources are needed, and, you know, we heard a question about maybe this is a better, more priority than that, and somebody's got to be sorting that out that can influence and discuss the policy implications, not just the administrative processes.
Rita, do you mean a work group specifically on the Sconset area, or something bigger?
I personally think something bigger. I just wanted to throw it out there, because it was a question that was asked to me. Again, I think all the things that we're looking at with Sconset can be applied and need to be applied at a bigger level. So, I don't think, I don't know that it's specific to one area. I think it is that bigger, higher-level island-wide discussion, where Sconset, again, is driving it at the moment, because it's the one right in front of us, but that the decisions we make on this are setting precedence for future decisions.
There's been a lot, there's more than Sconset that's, you know, Rick was talking about, North Shore, that, you know, Sconset gets the limelight there, that's the, you know, that's the, the big one that's, you know, that's in the limelight, but there's a lot of other small things that happen. People have driven sheet pile into the ground in front of their property, because they're still far enough away, and they're getting ready for the day when it does come to them. So, I mean, there's some crazy things that have happened out there, and it's, you know, so that's, the other point is a work group is, needs to be, staff needs to be attached with a work group. You know, it does no good to have four citizens, five citizens come up with a great bunch of ideas, not put any numbers to it, not have any reasonableness, or, you know, any buy-in one way or the other with the town staff. So, whatever we set up has to be, you know, this is going to be an ongoing issue, you know, for the rest of our lifetimes and our kids' lifetimes. So, this has to become part of the, you know, part of how we do business. And that, you know, and that's a little overwhelming right now, but how do we build it so it isn't, you know? And I think having a bunch of volunteers may not be the only thing, you know? So...
What about, go ahead, Jim.
You know, I think this is important enough, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but we could ask Rita, and maybe Libby, your national resources coordinator, to come up with a brief description of what a work group would do, and some suggested members by category, and appoint it next week or the week after.
I don't think I'm there yet. I think my suggestion would be, do we need, until we get a coastal resiliency, I know that could be a while, but workshops leading up to work groups with, has town staff, that has a member of the coastal conservancy, that has a member of, whatever I can even think of, leading up to official work group that's taking minutes and, you know, town staff. And I'm throwing that out there. That's almost more specific to...
We can refer to more members and said, they think it's a good idea. I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we establish a work group along the lines that Rita just mentioned, and see what the, what the will of the board is. So, that's my motion.
They're second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion. And I would like to say, I'd want to see the, you know, I'd like to see the details of that. I'd like to flesh out the details and then establish it. I don't want to say we're going to establish it and then...
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, my motion was to ask Rita to come up with a plan and have us, and bring it back. We can't just say it's established. We have to approve, you know, the charge, and we have to approve the, the membership, and that's not with, that's not in the scope of my motion.
Okay, good. Then I'm on board.
So, should I change your motion? Because you said motion to establish a work group. Should we say develop?
Whatever word you want to use, it's, to me, they're the same.
Well, you sort of developed the criteria.
I didn't say appoint a work group. I said establish a work group.
I think it's in, again, it's one of those where it's such a huge issue, where, for me, there's a tenant, well, I think we have to do it. I know that a work group that isn't functional and that's adding more to town admin, like, we have to do it well, and we have to make sure that it's thought out and timed well, and who's going to run it. But I just, I don't know that it's something that we can avoid, but I also would be interested, I don't know if we can in the middle of a motion, but to, to know if Libby feel like that would be helpful for her in keeping track of these things now.
I'm not really sure what they're going to do.
That's why I suggested my motion that Rita develop a...
Because Rita looks really sure.
Yeah, you're off the hook, Libby.
She looks more sure than I do.
I'm, I'm...
I'm very happy to work with you on it, but not for next week and not for the week after.
I think this might be a little premature. I have no problems with doing a group, but I think we need a better framework on where we're going with the coastal resiliency plan to figure out who's going to be on it, and what their charge is really going to be.
I only say not next week and not the week after, because we already have a number of items for both those agendas, and we are in the midst of getting ready for a town meeting.
I'm okay with it. I'm definitely okay with this happening over the next month, especially because we have our coastal resiliency plan coming back in April. I think this is, to Matt's point, this is a group that may be in existence for a long time. So, I think getting it right and getting in place, seeing what information does come out of the coastal resiliency plan, and over the next month, coming up with what it could look like. And I think we can look at it again and see where we're at. I would be fine with that. To me, that's still in the, as long as Jim isn't attaching the two weeks.
No, that's fine. I agree. That's exactly what I wanted to do.
Yeah. I think as long as it's not a timeframe, if it's May, June, we can keep talking about it. Okay? All is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the only other point I want to make with some of this, a lot of this is going to come down to how do, how much does it cost, and how do you pay for it? And so, to date, we really have, the town has taken a position of not, you know, not paying for these, for the, for any of this stuff. It's done by private owners. And in a way, you know, so do I, when I think about it, you know, because we look and say, which parts of the island are we going to say, you know, try to do something to help save, either, you know, piling lots of sand up, or putting berms, or doing other ecologically sensitive things. What, what areas can do that? And I think it's almost going to come down to economics. There's going to be sections of the island, like downtown, where we can better thousands of people, and the cost, it'll be expensive, but there'll be thousands of people to better. There's going to be other parts of the island that we are probably, you know, there's less people to charge, and it may be that it's a different type of retreat. So, it isn't just, I, I look at it, it's not just a, you know, I want to have, like, it's not just a wish list. There's the practical, how do you do it and pay for it? So, something might be different in Maticut, you know, or, you know, with four beach houses along the shore somewhere, like, like has already happened, then what happened downtown? I'm using two extreme examples. And I think what the issue we have sort of with Sconset is it falls like, sort of right in between. You know, it falls right in between a highly dense area with a lot of people to charge, there's a lot of rich people who can pay for it there, but it, it's, and there's going to be places that are going to be even harder determinations. And people are going to come to the, us, our board, or future boards, and they're going to be asking for everybody else to pay for them. So, I kind of think we really, you know, some, some of the early discussions should be philosophical. You know, do we as a community pay to, you know, for anyone, or everyone, or nobody? I mean, I just, and that to me, if you have, if you say we're not going to pay, that's going to lead to, almost lead to the result over time. So, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, and to all of the members, just want to thank you for having this conversation. It's been over an hour, maybe an hour and a half. You've covered some really critical issues. It's very complicated. The chairman took time yesterday to meet with us to just kind of organize it so it could be productive and positive, and I think it has. And so, we're very grateful for keeping this issue front and center, and something that you're discussing openly and publicly. I know you've been criticized in the past for not doing that. So, we would just, on behalf of the Coastal Conservancy, like to recognize that and thank you again.
Thank you, Deanne. As I'm sitting here, thinking about this work group now, it's almost...
Bless you.
Yeah, I know, the coastal resiliency plan's coming out. We almost need, I was thinking about our strategic plan with our three areas, our three goals, and how big that is, and we have consultants, we have NOVAC group helping us implement it. To me, it's at that, it's at that level. It's that big. We, we almost need consultants, and admin, and the coastal resiliency, you know, staff person, and to be able to really tackle this. It's just as large as our strategic plan, which is over three goals. So, I hope we get there. I know it's not anytime soon. I'm trying to freak out, Libby, but I think that's, that's where we're heading. If anybody should be doing it in Nantucket, should be. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight and your patience. Any other comments from the board before we move on? Okay. Move on to a discussion regarding establishment of a cannabis advisory work group.
I'm just going to keep starting work groups tonight, I think.
There's a few issues. Did you want to say anything off the bat, or do you want us to? Okay, we can wait.
I can...
Right, I know. Right.
So, I can give a little bit of background to this. After going through the process of the Marijuana Review Committee, one thing that has come up is consistently is the conversation around the craft cultivators. And it's something that, I know Andrew has been talking to craft cultivators, I've been talking to people, and trying to come up with what would, what would zoning changes look like that would allow for craft cultivation. And we've just really hit a wall where everyone just needs to be in the same room together, the growers, the zoning specialists, the planning specialists. So, it was actually Andrew's suggestion that we have a, a work group to come up with this zoning. And we have some good examples, but we really just need the people that are going to be growing to help everyone else understand what would actually work for them. And in subsequent conversations and speaking to Bob Cole and some of the Marijuana Review Committee members, there is a conversation around, is it, is it just a craft cultivator committee looking at zoning specifically, or do we need something that is broader than that to look at policy going forward regarding marijuana? Maybe it's looking at host community agreements, maybe it's looking at the impacts of if the limitations lifted, something like that. But, for me, it very much started with, how are we going to zone to allow for craft cultivation? And that's, that's really what we've crafted it around at the moment. And we felt that regardless of whether Mr. Cole's article passes, that it's something that we really need to get going on now, thinking that it could be something for a special town meeting, if not for an annual town meeting, but we'll need that amount of time to, to really craft them properly.
Yeah, I think Rita and I have talked about this, and so, why don't we just start it now? Yeah, I, I think Rita and I have talked about this and said, well, why don't we just start it now? Why, why wait for, for this? And I, I agree, we originally started talking about that it was kinda specific to craft cultivation. But with more discussion, I think having a, a work group that's thinking about what you said, Rita, but also the displacement of the black market and how does that affect things and working with public safety? And I don't know, that's research and just thinking about all the things that unintended consequences and, and so not just zoning, just more than that. So I think the group having it broader, which I think that was your initial, your initial thought. Don?
I kind of like the idea of it being an advisory, like the cannabis advisory committee in terms of the names so that they could address the craft cultivation, the zoning, but it's a group that could stay in place more long, long-term to advise on all of the evolving issues that will come out of this sort of new industry.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have a group who became like the local experts who could keep up to date on what's, all this changing stuff.
And I think, you know, part of this too, the, the composition of the group was important in that and trying to come up with a way where we can have people in the business apart of it, community members at large, and then key board members and department heads as well. And, and yeah, I think cannabis advisor group is probably the best way to look at it, maybe with the cultivation being the initial focus, but then broadening into other things as they come up, even maybe future RFQ processes. Who knows?
Bob?
Bob Cole, when I first wrote this article, I was hoping to have it at least bring up the conversation. The conversation needs to be brought up and we're doing that. Some of the issues that I was hoping the committee would be is how, how we're gonna pick the next licenses, whether they be cultivation or retail. Along with that, just comes host agreement. You've spent a lot of time learning about host agreements and stuff like that. The second one is to talk about the number that we need to start with. The number of cultivation licenses we're gonna allow or not allow, and in the future, talk about the more retail licenses. Hopefully, the committee won't, if there is a committee, won't have to deal with the issue of one leftover license. But that's something that has to be considered by the selectmen. Three is to make it as local as we can. There's ways like scalping with residencies, and I'm sure the state will allow us to be a little creative in how we regulate it locally. Four is how we work it on the island, whether those issue is zoning. And one of those issues is for the next two years, we're in a unique spot in the industry. Until the federal government changed their laws, the only marijuana that's gonna be legal on Nantucket is homegrown and from the dispensaries. So we have two years to get together and make it a small industry. The rules, there's lots of different sizes. There's, I hear you use craft growers. There's a craft co-op that has, that's allowed, it's a pretty big deal, one. One of the participant has to have farm income, but they're allowed up to 100,000 square feet to grow. There's tier one licenses, which in my eyes would be as big as we need. They go up to tier 10. Tier one licenses is $5,000, uh, 5,000 square foot of canopy. That's how all the rules go on canopy. And the canopy is, so those licenses are cheap. It's cheaper to have cult tier one licenses that are outside. The state's putting into greenhouses and outside is rather than inside. The craft cultivation license is a broader thing. And there's also a thing called a micro grower. These are the three things that I can see part of Nantucket if we're gonna start thinking about the future. Because thinking about the future is one of the things that we have to do. There's gonna be issues, social consumption. Delivery, I don't believe is a big issue because delivery is more a thing. But social consumption, five years from now, there might be licensed restaurants that wanna do things that involve cannabis as the market is shown. So we have to think about those in the future. Compliance to the office. In your host agreement, you give them compliance to all these other departments. There's ways and all these little things that need to be talked about and to make rules for the future. The state of Massachusetts has done an unbelievable job in making rules and regulations for the future. Now, we need to step up and do that. I see a couple of the things like energy efficient. If people grow up energy efficient, it'll be with the sun. Oda control. We've had legal growing, homegrown for two years now, two summers. How many complaints has there been about odor?
I think that means very few.
That's what I'm saying. So a lot of these issues, security, the state has dealt with the issue of security for all the cultivation. For us to make it harder, when we have the opportunity in the future to make it in the next year or two, to make it a little Nantucket industry to supply the dispensaries, there's issues of transportation. A transportation license on the mainland is really, really expensive. We're gonna need to transport, if we do small growers, from small growers to the dispensaries. So these are all, it's as complicated as the bluff issue and it's gonna affect more people in the future than the bluff issue. I just would like you not to have to deal with it so you can talk more about the bluff. So that's what I would hope that this, the sensible cannabis planning committee could do. I liked the Broadway that it was doing. And to think that we could do all of this by next special town meeting, no. Let's try to do it in a year. It's gonna be a lot of work, but the town has to also embrace it. And if the town doesn't embrace it, you don't see a lot of people here like you did last week. And these are the people that it affected, the people that were on last week's meeting. I don't see a lot of people working with the town to try to solve this issue. Everybody wants in it to admit. There you go, guys.
Thank you, Bob. It sounds like we're on the same page of this advisory work group. So if the, if your article passes or doesn't, this, this is, I think, we're on agreement, this is gonna happen for, the board likes it and wants to move forward with it.
With it without the article.
Right, right. So that way it takes a little pressure off the article. We're, we're gonna go forward with this.
Okay, then that just means I have to do, like I've done my own thing today. I mean, I'll go to town meeting and try to do what I'm talking about.
Right. And somebody else can say, well, we're, the, the board backs it. We've already started this process.
Oh, I, I don't mind that. It's just the charge to be talking just about cultivation and zoning. It's a waste. That's just, you're kicking the road, the, the pan down the road again.
I think we're on.
So I would hope that over the next week, we would come together and have a more complete committee and working plan that I can work with and you can work.
Yeah, I think we're all shaking our heads yes on that. Rita?
Yeah, then I think that was the discussion, I think their support for broadening it from just zoning and cultivation. That that might be the focus in the initial, and maybe not. I'm just saying that, you know, that's something that might have a feasible timeframe within the next year. Some of it might take longer, but that we would be broadening the purview of this cannabis advisory group from just craft cultivation.
That's why I put that last sort of bullet up there, potential review of licensing matters, local cannabis industry issues and trends. I thought that might cover that. But certainly, this charge of this work group is gonna need to be refined.
Right. Okay. Any other thoughts?
Do we agree on cannabis advisory group as the name?
Sure, whatever.
It's important.
It's fine with me. It covers, that covers everything, the title.
Was it cannabis advisory group? CAW?
CAG.
C-A-W?
CAW.
Cannabis Advisory Committee?
CAC.
I don't know.
I like CAC. Whatever you guys decide to call it. I'll, I'm backing. Okay, committee reports. Anybody have anything? No. Nothing. All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All's a favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.